To make the best decisions, Lord, for our city and the planning of things that are ahead and decisions that need to be made. We have special prayer tonight for our police officers. Lord, you might take and keep them safe. We thank you, Lord, for their protection. We pray tonight for our schools. Lord, you might take and keep them safe. And Lord may it take and help us turn towards righteousness. We might take and have a city to have your blessings upon it. Thank you, Lord, tonight for this meeting. We ask you now, Lord, you have your will and your way. And we thank you, Lord, for the new members of council since last time I've been here. Lord, may you help them contribute, Lord, some wise information tonight as well also as look for your guidance. Thank you, Lord, for your goodness upon our city now. Jesus, in me pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please take a roll call.
Abrams.
Here.
Manager. Grubbs.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Dole.
Here.
Maynes.
Here.
Galindo.
Here.
First item is approval of the council meeting minutes from March 6, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, will you please take the roll?
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
This evening, under the invited guest and visitors, the March Chamber Member of the Month, Business of the Month, was Hubert Company, but they were unable to be here this evening. We'll have to reschedule them for another evening, or the chamber will. But we do have a presentation from Freddy's. And on behalf of Freddy's, Jeff Pickron is here to make the presentation.
On behalf of Freddy's Restaurant, we have a check here for the Mayor's Fund for $200. We've been very privileged and blessed to not only do this once, but now do this twice. So we do have a check for Mr. Mayor here, and we'd love to present it to him.
So a year ago, well, probably a year and three months ago, Freddy's opened, and they held a fundraiser during their opening for the Mayor's Fund. And on their one-year anniversary, they did it again. They've been having great success in Harrison. I really think they have a really nice-looking restaurant on the strip up there, one of the nicest, and they have excellent food. So if you have a chance, you can patronize Freddy's, and thank you again for, on behalf of the Mayor's Fund.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of a resolution indicating that services are available for a proposed annexation to the city of Harrison, Ohio, from Harrison Township and to consent to said annexation. This is a resubmital. The original petition was withdrawn. However, in the interim, we were not able to get new paperwork prepared for tonight. So I'd like to ask for a table on this item until the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table this. Second.
And Mayor, if I could just add to it that nothing substantially changed with the zoning or the annexation request. It was just a matter of, I think, a survey error that had to be corrected when it went to the auditor's office, the recorder's office.
So it was just a very simple surveying error, but we will have documents to review for the next meeting. So we have a first and a second to table. Will you please take the roll?
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
So that brings us down to the reports. For the Mayor's Report, I have a proclamation I'd like to read. And I'd like to invite Captain, retired Captain Steve Wilson forward during the proclamation. Stephen D. Wilson, Captain, in recognition of your retirement, whereas Steve Wilson was hired as a police officer by the city of Harrison on December 1, 1989, and whereas during his career, he was promoted to the position of Sergeant, Lieutenant, and Captain, and whereas he has been recognized with numerous awards and commendations for his exemplary professional performance, and whereas Captain Steve Wilson always demonstrated a follow-me leadership style, never asking of his staff what he wasn't willing to do himself, and whereas Steve Wilson took an oath when he was hired to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, a note he never broke over his 29 years of service, and now therefore be it resolved that I, William Nyer, Mayor of the city of Harrison, on behalf of the entire council and citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Captain Steve Wilson on the occasion of his retirement, January 5, 2018. We thank Captain Wilson for his service and wish him the very best in his future. And I've signed this, and I have a copy for Steve to keep so he can display it proudly. Additionally, I have an exemplary service award plaque for Steve that reads, "Presented to Stephen D. Wilson, Captain, in recognition of over 29 years of outstanding service and unselfish devotion and duty as a member of the Harrison Police Department, 1989 to 2018." I'd also like to present you with your retired police officer's badge.
I asked the mayor if I could say a few words when I knew this was going to take place. I've taken a lot of pride in the fact that I've worked for this city. I probably have more esprit de corps than anyone that I know. Just a great deal of personal pride in where this city was when I started, where it is today. I've worked with some great officers over the years. The police chief is Chuck Luntie has always been extremely supportive. The mayors and council that have sat here have also always been very supportive, and I thank you for the opportunity that was given to me by Mayor Hamroffus when he hired a young kid sitting across the desk from him. And when he shook my hand, I told him if he would give a kid his brick, I would give him a career. And I'm proud that I fulfilled that commitment to Ham and to the city. And I am also proud that I'm ending my police career under a mayor who truly cares about his employees and also cares about the city and the council that loves the city as much as I do. So thank you for the opportunity to serve, and I appreciate all your support. Thanks, Mayor.
It's always nice to send off an employee in retirement that's had a career with the city and a distinguished career at that. So I wish Steve all the best. And that concludes my report this evening. Does Law Director have a report this time?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Abrams, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Niehaus, for the beautiful invocation. We appreciate you coming here and doing that for us, and of course, your involvement in our community. We appreciate. And thank you, Jeff and Carol Pickron, from Freddy's, of course, for coming here. And it's just awesome how involved you are with our community, and we're really glad that you're here. Our Easter program's coming up. March 31 starts at 8:00 a.m. here. The Pancake Breakfast by Boy Scout Troop 409 starts at 8:00 a.m. It's $5 per person. That'll end at 11:00. We have an egg juggler this year. That's new, so that'll be exciting for the kiddos and parents. And the games start at 10:00. Thank you, Legacy Church, for sponsoring the games. And at 11 o'clock, the Easter egg hunt will commence. It will end 30 seconds later. Over, what, 3,000 eggs? The kids have them hunted super quick. So if you're not there right at 11:00 with your basket, you probably won't get in on the hunt. So join us March 31, right here. And then the district is planning another food truck rally on Saturday, May 19, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. down in the district. So again, similar from last year, live music and a variety of food. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grubbs, your report this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of different items to cover this evening. First, we did have our finance committee meeting this evening. Still trying to wrap up some stuff from the first couple of months, but we don't have revenues really flowing in yet, so exact numbers aren't fully out there as of right now. But we did sit down and speak with representatives from Haran. They do employee benefit consulting. Obviously, with the insurance environment that we're in, it's very important for us to revisit this, not only for the cost-effective measures that we may be able to take to properly represent the citizens, but take care of our employees also. So we're all sitting down, taking it very serious, listening to what some of these different consulting firms have to say, not only for their primary insurance, but their supplemental insurances as well. So those discussions will continue as we go through the spring months. But insurance is redone in August, I believe, so we have a little bit of time, but we want to be in front of the game. I also had the opportunity to sit down with Tricia Evans and Jeff Sack. Tricia is a school board member and sat down and spoke with them in regards to what's going on with the schools. Obviously, you've seen in newspapers and after the election, all the events that will be transpiring over the year, but they're really trying to continue down the same path of being involved out in the community and creating discussion so everybody has their input heard. They are having community discussions. I think the first one is this coming sun, or, I'm sorry, the first one is tonight. The next one's April 12, I believe.
Harrison Elementary.
At Harrison Elementary for down here in town. But on top of those community discussions, they're trying to have in-home discussions, you know? For those individuals that really want to be involved in this process and inform those living around them, you can reach out to the school board or some of the administration at the local schools and set one of these meetings. I myself will probably be having one of these sometime in the coming months, but it's just to get that information out there, to allow your voice to be heard. But it's to be focused in your neighborhood. While I live down here in Harrison, in downtown Harrison, there are people all over the place, from out by Miami Whitewater Park to over where Ms. Cindy lives, to where Mark lives up in Carolina Pines, you know? And we want everyone to have the chance to be heard. So if there are questions, feel free to reach out to me. I'd love to answer any that I can. I may still bounce back and use my resources, but it is an opportunity to create a true community school, and that's what they're striving to do. So if there is anything, please reach out to me. Jeff, Freddy's, you know, you guys do. You continue to step up in our community. You've been here a year and three months, and you've done so much, and I appreciate that. The support that it flows into our Mayor's Fund to support the community is huge, and it's individuals and companies like that, like you, that make it all possible. So thank you very much. And then congratulations, Captain Wilson. I know he stepped out, but, you know, the contribution that he made to our community is huge, influencing young and old, touching so many people in our community. It is, it's incredible to see somebody come and spend 29, 29 years of their life here on one job. And that dedication, absolutely incredible. So thank you for everything you have done, and greatly appreciate it. Other than that, I think that's all, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank Freddy's for coming out tonight and donating to the Mayor's Fund. There's so many good businesses in Harrison, and that just keeps growing, so I love seeing that. Thank you for what you do for our community. And again, thank you to Dr. Niehaus for coming out and doing invocation. It's a little over two years now we've been doing this at the beginning of council meetings, and I love it. So we're going to keep it going as long as we can. So thanks for your participation. And definitely, congratulations to Captain, retired Captain Steve Wilson, for, I just hope he can go out and enjoy his life now. He deserves it. He's given this city a lot, so it's time for him to give back to himself and his family. So congratulations in your retirement. Police Committee met this evening. We had a pretty quick meeting, which is kind of unusual, but we did talk about the traffic crash analysis report. There were 25 auto accidents in the city in February, 20 on public roadways, and five on private property. The car 216, which is the Ford Taurus that I spoke about last meeting that had been run into, those repairs are completed, and that car is back in service now. We also had administered a new civil service exam for the police department, and out of the 20 applicants, 17 took the test on March 3, and 15 of those applicants had passing scores. So coming up on the 21st, we'll be interviewing the six top scorers out of that test, and we'll be hiring an officer, hopefully by the end of April, to replace the one opening that we have in the department to get us back up to 22 strong. Then we spent quite a lot of time talking about a system called Alert or Smart 911. It's Hamilton County Alert HC. There's a couple of different names I see here, but we're going to be looking at joining this system. It's a $1,500 a year charge. That covers both the city of Harrison and Harrison Township. It's all based on population, so that's what determines what the fee is annually. But this is a, it's a mass notification system for the county, and actually, it's nationwide, but this Hamilton County Alert HC is for Hamilton County. And it's to notify residents of any kind of incident that's happening in the city, any kind of warning. So be it a weather service watch, a warning, flash floods, shelter-in-place warning, tornado warnings, civil emergency messages, evacuation alerts, and it can be a whole variety of things, up to, hey, the food truck rally is coming around next weekend if you'd like to attend. So it's a way to reach out to the community, but you're only allowed, you're only able to reach out to those people who sign up for it. So we'll be getting more information out about this as we progress and, I believe, decide to become involved in this. And then you'll get information about how to sign up for this. Something here that I find really interesting is that if you sign up for this, you can create a profile for yourself. And what that is, is you can give first responders a whole lot of information that they might need if you dial 911 and they show up at your house. You can put in your profile names, physical descriptions, photos of yourself, your children, your dogs, your cats, phone numbers of people who might need to be notified, medical information, existing conditions, allergies, disabilities, medications being taken by people in your household. So there's a whole variety of information, and it kind of sounds like Big Brother at first, but it's what is going, the first responder is going to have information that they need to treat you. You may be unconscious by the time they arrive, and they need information about you. And one key point is that this information's only available to them for 45 minutes when you call 911. Before that and after that, it's locked back down. They can't just pull up your information and research you on a whim. So if you call 911, they're on their way to your house, they have your information, and they know going in what to expect. So it's really a nice system. So we'll be talking about this a little more as we discuss it in committee and possibly bring it to council for approval to spend the money to get involved in this. So more to come on that. That's, well, Police Committee, the next meeting, will be April the 17th at 6:00. And that's all I have for Police Committee. Mr. Manager is not here this evening, and he asked me to also report on Fire Committee, which met this evening. And we did get the monthly reports from the chief. Nothing really earth-shattering to speak about there. We have civil service testing also coming up for the Fire Department. From what I understand, the sign-up is open only until this Friday, and I guess it's close of business of the community center. So that'll be, I have, 3:00 is the deadline on the 23rd, which is this Friday, to sign up to take the civil service exam. The exam will be given on March 31, and it's for entry-level firefighter, parametric. Parametric.
Paramedic.
Sorry. Too many, too many words. I'm not used to talking this long. It's going to be held right here at the community center, so if you're interested in that position, by all means, get in here and sign up. The Fire Department also did have a training seminar called Step Up and Lead. They held that back on the 15th of March and had over 110 D, so it was actually very We have a firefighter that submitted his resignation, so the test that's coming up is actually going to be for two open positions, one pretty much immediately, and the second one will be coming later in the year. And that is all I have for Fire Committee. Their next meeting of Fire will be the 17th also, and they will be at 6:00. I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
One note on anybody applying for the firefighter exam. It is a $15 fee to take the exam, and you must pay that in cash here at the community center. If you're here by 3, I guarantee you'll be able to apply. The center sometimes closes a little early on Friday, so 3:00, you're safe. It could be a little later than that, but 3:00, you'll be safe, you'll be here in time to sign up. Mr. Dole, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. First off, I just want to say a big thank you to Jeff and Carol with Freddy's. Your generosity is appreciated throughout the community. Planning Commission held a meeting March 13. There were only two items on the agenda. Mayor and I both attended. The first item was an application for a vintage clothing slash flower shop at 130 Harrison Avenue, was unanimously approved. And then the second item we had, it was not an item that was voted on, it was a legal opinion that was read regarding the use of a property at 500 Harrison Avenue, basically stating the owner wasn't under any obligation to submit an application for the use as it was already considered as part of that zoning code. That was really all that happened. It's Planning Commission. Did you have anything to add to that, Mr. Mayor?
No.
That's pretty well-covered.
Pretty accurate.
Okay. The next meeting of the Streets, Storm, and Utility Committees will be on April 3 at 6:00 p.m., and that's all I've got.
Do you have any update on repairs on West Road?
Jim, what did they find on that when they camered the sewer on West?
Well, we did camera probably about 600 feet of it, and that piece of fact that we did run the camera, there's only 110-foot section that needs to be repaired, and that's the next step that the contractors will be doing. We have, with the weather coming up, with possible snow tonight and tomorrow, that's some delayed telepath coming in, and camera rest of the pipe going up the hill towards KLI. And once we get that video out there, the committee, I should have more than anything on the third.
Okay. So construction's going to be continuing, but not immediately.
Right. Okay. More to come on the 3rd.
Okay. We'll be looking forward to get the report on the 3rd.
All right. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayne, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. Thank you. I want to thank all our visitors for coming out tonight. Certainly appreciate Dr. Niehaus and everyone else that's come to give the invocation, and all our church leaders. We covet your prayers as we try to serve the city here. Always thank you, the Freddy's, for coming out, and just want to reiterate congratulations to retired Captain Steve Wilson and thank him for his service. Jim, I have a question for you. A solid waste or yard waste cleanup on a Saturday, is that going to be the 24th or the 31st with the holiday?
Yeah, it's the last Saturday.
Right, which is the 31st.
Right.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and do, we're going to go ahead and do that?
Let me check for the guys who come. Do you have, uh, what the month is going to be?
Okay. All right.
A, Mike?
It's the 24th.
Be on the website. 24th.
We have injunction with Township.
It's April.
That's in April.
That's April. That's April. I'm talking about the cities.
That's April 28.
I'm talking about the cities monthly. Is it, yeah, is that?
It's Saturday.
Is it going to be the 31st?
Due to Easter, I think it's this, the 24th.
It's the 24th.
I'm getting told it's the 24th.
The 24th.
She knows somebody.
Yeah.
Okay. You know somebody in the know. So our yard waste cleanup will be this Saturday, March 24.
Yeah, if you're talking about March, it'll be the week before, because we won't have an Easter weekend.
All right. It'll be this coming Saturday, then. We'll have yard waste cleanup back behind the community center rather than the 31st. So I'm sorry that I didn't check into that before, but, and then the Township cleanup will be April the 28th from 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and that's when you can bring everything, except motor oil, I'm told. No motor oil, tires, yard waste, hot water heaters, metal, computer monitors, electronics, all that kind of good stuff. No paint. No paint, no motor oil. No propane tanks, but most everything else. If you bring something you're not allowed, they'll send it back home with you. The next Tree Board meeting is going to be, I know the Tree Board meeting is going to be Tuesday, March 27 at 7:00 p.m. And then on Friday, April the 20th, the Tree Board, perhaps the mayor, if not the mayor, the vice mayor, and myself, will be attending the 2018 Tree City USA Awards Program in Miami Sperger, Ohio. On April 23, that following Monday, instead of having a Tree Board meeting in April, we will have a tree giveaway, 200 black gum seedlings as part of the Arbor Day giveaway. And it's not on Arbor Day, which is Tuesday, but on Monday, the 23rd, we're doing the tree giveaway. This will take place at 7:00 p.m. at the Harrison Public Library, and Jim Cerce will be our guest speaker for this event. And again, this event will take place in lieu of the April Tree Board meeting. This past Saturday and Sunday, we had approximately a dozen volunteers come out and volunteer at the motocross track. We cleaned up dead trees and trimmed back limbs and did quite a bit of cleanup work and left a pile of garbage for the city to clean up for us to take out. And if you're interested in volunteering, we'll have two more days in April, April 14th and 15th, as well as some more days later in the year. I would encourage you to go to the Doug Dunaway Facebook page to find out more about our volunteer days, if that's something you're interested in. I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
I may have missed it, but the Township cleanup, what's the hours of that?
That's from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Maybe a shredder truck here, too.
A shredder truck to take.
Hard shredding.
Oh, paper document shredding. There'll be a document shredder there on the.
10 to 3 or 9 to 2.
Yeah, Bill.
And we're wanting to know what the hours are on there.
Yeah. They're not the same as the 8 to 4. It's a little bit different. So we'll get some information on that and get that out to folks on the document shredding. So we'll get some information on that and get that out to folks on the document shredding.
We have two council meetings before then.
I thought it was 10:00 and they get.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Is that all?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Galindo, do you have a report this evening?
Not a report, Mayor. Just a quick update. We did meet with civil defense. No report of significance. We're still looking at some of the documents and benchmarking and best practices there. Jeff and Carol, the one thing I can't believe anyone hasn't thanked you for is that sugar-free, fat-free, calorie-free concrete mixers. Absolutely. That's the best thing going. But no other reports. Trying to see if we can keep it brief tonight, make a record.
This might be the first meeting under.
I don't know.
35 minutes.
We had a seven-minute meeting once.
Seven minutes?
Yeah.
I don't think this group could beat seven minutes. Again.
In that case, I'll make a motion to.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
I'm a mind reader tonight. Scary.
I was getting ready for an executive session.
He was starting to filibuster. He wanted to get it past 8:15.
I was kind of nervous for a second, like.
That would have been great if he would have said executive session.
So do we have a second?
I seconded it.
We have a first and a second to adjourn. Please take the roll.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
It's yay, right?
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.